Trustee Akina waves, we're getting him on the screen. We have five trustees, we have four of them.
Mahalo, aloha everyone and welcome to our Wana'i Island community meeting. It's such a privilege to be here to share this beautiful day in Wana'i with our beneficiaries as well as our kamakili. And a special mahalo to this beautiful kamakili that's been here for a long time. You're just so beautiful. It just made our day. This video can be viewed by a live stream on Ho'oponopono's website at www.ho'oponopono.org/live. Before we begin, I would also like to ask each trustee to introduce themselves and their staff at this time. And we'll start with trustee Ruput Lauter.
Mahalo Chair. Hello everybody, I'm Ruput Lauter, at-large trustee representing all of O'Leary. And we're so pleased to be here today. What a way to start. I'm not here with us today, but they sent a lot of them.
You can be affectionate. Mahalo, we're treating them how they want. My name is Akina, I'm honored to serve as a whole of the trustee and fellow trustees. I'm here on one of two heart of these, which is the Beneficia, and the Heart of the Committee, which is what we do with our stake in. And here is my mahalo, if you remind me if you've ever been there. Anyway, I've been right there. Mahalo, we're all for joining us virtually and in person. It's so thank you.
Trustee Alaka.
Mahalo, I am Kaukua, I am Wana'a alaka, and I am trustee for the islands of Wa'oponopono. I am so happy to be here, my goodness. The previous year it was me that called your passion and everything, and so forth. But I'm so happy to be here, and what a beautiful day, an extremely beautiful day, flying in, perfect weather conditions and so on. And then to see those people rest on our feet. Oh my gosh, I was too happy to watch you kids sing and do their own thing. The hard I have to keep them in place sometimes, but I'm so happy to be up in there. Mahalo, we for that. I'm standing as well, helping put things together. I'd like to introduce Pohai, Ronny is Pohai, oh yeah, she's back there, she did a great job. Thank you, Pohai. Good for you, the patrons that you bring to the meeting to tell. And then also Summer, Summer Story, another trustee. Shark here, back here, my little girl, thank you for. We're all on the same flight, of course, because we know about the local living being. And so, we would have been here earlier for the field trips, but the Lumayis were here, so wow.
Aloha, I am Kaku, I'm trustee of the Lindsay, and I'm the Valley trustee. I serve as the chair of the board of trustees. And I'm so happy to be here today. You know, if you wonder why we're here? We are here because we come to visit you once a year. And why we come to visit you? We come to visit you to give you reports and to listen to your concerns. So should you have any concerns or even happy thoughts, we're here to listen. Thank you so much for the wonderful opening, giving us such a good feeling, good manam. And good mahalo to you for taking care of our gatekeeper. At this moment, I want to introduce our four hundred, our CEO, who will, oh before I send it over to her. I want to introduce to you our board secretary, who is De'opon Ito Kansu.
Ah, in the face.
Although you can't see her online, I have one of my aides, Amber, Amber Kaldua. She's online, taking care of this sound factor to go all over the state. So kids, if you folks don't know, you folks are singing to everybody all over the state of Hawaii. Because it's live streaming on our internet. I'd like to introduce trustee Akina. Would you like to introduce yourself, trustee? And to your use.
Aloha.
Yeah. I am, did you meet me Andrew? No, please.
Are you able to hear me? Well, I say aloha to all of you.
Thank you, trustee Akina. At this time, the time for to Pohan, our CEO, to introduce our board of our entire.
Are we able to correct them? Josh?
Welcome, mahalo, I'm looking forward to hearing you, mahalo for joining us. In the room today, if you could please stand up so everybody can see where you are. We have our senior director of strategy and implementation, I have Farin. We have director of the well meeting, and I am Alona, who is here, I'm here, I'm here.
Aloha, Kaku.
Glory, and you're reading classes, Andrew. I see this coming in your head, this is a positive. What we're calling, hold on, I see seven fingers, I'm trying to call you, I'm not allowed. And then we have Joshua Cool, Almania Diner. That is all, we need to get out of this. Star, I'm a beneficiary, services agent, mahalo.
Mahalo, me, at this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to our island of Wana'a trustee. You are going to oversee the rest of today's meeting. Mahalo, we're here.
At this time, I'm giving first of all, another big round of applause. And I'm really going to applaud the usual team, you know, the people. Yeah, I'm making this title, so it's a bit of a, with the same, it's been, I know, it's been always. But make sure that I can, please enjoy, so we can, whatever they like after. At this time, we're going to go on tour of Jennifer. And this next, we're going to be, we are probably about here.
This chair is, okay, that's true. All right, everyone, so, if you're going to have to, uh, charge the bill, I'm going to give you. And this is the status of the Ho'oponopono activities. And before, do we have anyone sign that as soon as this would be, just that I am?
We don't have anyone sign that as soon as this, right?
All right, mahalo, we want, and so we're going to move on to the activities of Ho'oponopono. And this will be presented to by our CEO for our 18th company, the Ho'oponopono activities. How does he do it anyway?
Um, not a trustee, and trustees. When you folks came in, uh, to sign in, there was an early community report. So if you didn't grab one on your way, please make sure you grab one on the way home. There's lots of information that we put together that is specifically moved on to Wana'i. I'm just going to go over a couple of things to highlight what's happening here on Wana'i. In terms of Ho'oponopono activities, there are five active charities providing services on Wana'i. Totally $3.49 in the morning. There's also one activity involving loan fund, uh, totally in $20,000. I wanted to give our Wana'i beneficiaries the coffee on Mokulele and the issues regarding reliable travel. Over the last few months, trustee Alaka and I have been in communication with State Department Director of Transportation and Stifin. To ensure that the reliability of travel for Mokulele and Wana'i is being addressed. Director Stifin and Senator Lindepoy have been meeting regularly with Mokulele and Alaska Airlines to address the persistent flight conservations and delays. In our update meetings, Director Stifin has shared that he has required Mokulele to provide an action plan that will resolve the issue that has been plaguing Wana'i. Director Stifin also connected me with Louis Saint Seir, president and CEO of Mokulele on the operation. And he shared that his primary focus right now is to stabilize the company's operations. Mokulele's action plans to stabilize the company include a comprehensive community outreach strategy that's designed to keep the company closely connected with both of you nearly here on Wana'i and Mokulele. His plan is that we'll register long call meetings in Mokulele and Wana'i to provide to folks a forum for direct communications with all of you. They're also going to establish a community advisory board with local representatives to ensure that community voices are being heard at the highest levels of their decision process. Operationally, they're going to focus on gradually increasing their caravan fleet size. This expansion is being carefully planned to ensure that they can meet the demands for both scheduled and chartered flights. Reducing flights from Hawaii Islands so that they can increase flights to Wana'i and Mokulele. They will implement new maintenance protocols to improve aircraft reliability and to set up real-time performance dashboards accessible to all of you, to the public in general via their website. And they're also working on a communication strategy to develop a crisis communication plan to ensure that they can respond quickly and effectively to unforeseen events. There's also a detailed letter, I actually want to give you, pick up on the way home, that is from Mokulele. So you can get more detail than what I just shared, yeah, mahalo.
Mahalo, Cece, our next island of the journey is our community presentation. Our first presentation is the Department of Water lands. They go off the slow, they're making specific fires, we're going to speak on this, we're going to follow them.
No one is saying, just speak on this side.
Mahalo, all right, at this time, I'd like to have the Department of Water land representative. At this time, gave me the, the microphone, and I will be doing your presentation.
I'm just, you know, I'm, well, sharing, you know, what it seems. I even spell the problem, and I will be acting on the sugar for the land of the religion, for the part of the water lands. We have the opportunity to, um, surely, with the board of trustees and staff, through some of the areas that we are, that we are working on at the party, and what it is. For some reason, we've had an opportunity to give them, and ensure that's all the case. And kind of talk about what's, we try to, something about the, you know, industry, you know, from a park. Um, that's what I need open, and then also the heatwave property, raising the revenue to the top. And then also creates two, what's the word, um, for residential buildings. And so that's an exciting opportunity that's coming up because the county of Maui is working on a number of projects that are going right next to us, and they're working on sharing infrastructure. So there's a lot of areas to do, quite, the water, the least water, power, et cetera, to be able to provide, to make it possible to build. Um, the state, their county has started, they're not with the request of the overall.
I love you.
They work on tackle, which you have, instead of seeing something like art, everything's provided, information, and so on. And I just wanted to say that, lastly, that works that it's next. And so we are continuing to work in the county of Maui, so that we can develop, because too, I encourage those people who have the latest, if you haven't updated the information, please do so. Because they're reaching out to you guys now, to see the type of policy they're looking to. We're working, kind of, he's got a couple of work with the county of Maui, with the county of Jerry, so he's been part of the one thing that. And he's been providing really beautiful qualities and challenges. And when we take a look at the work, I'm going to go on the show, your home lands. We have a community, many, many different options, because not all of our beneficiaries can afford the trucky house development. So we have many different options for financing, for lending, for borrowing, as well as for building. And so starting to take a look at our website, at D V G Channel Projects, and you'll be able to see a lot of the stuff that we're working on in the point I know. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to share with you the stuff that we're doing here on Island, I know, really. And mahalo, uh, oh man, that was beautiful, I'm just sharing your whole with us.
Do we have any questions for Kaukua?
I have a question, hopefully, in connection with all that. You know, when you're talking about the development with the county's leaders. Um, are you folks going to submit something, because America made next week to let you hear about a concern about the budget?
Uh, we're not submitting anything because we're working with them inside as far as shared infrastructure and three different means of monies. So we're not really asking anything from the county. And we have some operations from the state as well as pursuing more operations from county.
So you are, I was actually sorry, Diane, because I'm, you can, sorry. But you, you folks are working together with.
Yes. With mayor's office, with the Department of Water, as well as with the housing side.
Yes, that is really important for us on Wana'i, for Waha's.
Yes, so one of the things that we did was really provide context of what that meant as far as supply that's coming on. So not only the pull-out workforce housing, which is all items, but it's also the stuff that the mayor and the county is working on. We've been meeting with mayor's office on that, especially specifically with managing directors of SIA. Uh, what that'll look like, this is what it's. Thank you.
So I have a question. I'd like to know the status, I know the neighbors that are well-located, now identified with fires. This problem, but it was more than a word, so. I would say, Kaukua, is, is, you should have a part of it, in that order.
We are, so we are, we have participated both fire prevention signing. So working in regards to our lands and fire prevention, fire maintenance, and awareness. Especially with each of them, you know, on wildfire. We've also been working with a number of different agencies, including Maui County, which we've been meeting with on a weekly basis. There's a number of agencies, etc., that have been on a weekly basis on progress in Maui. And so that includes not only transitional housing, but water, wastewater, so on. And so we specifically, and we are leaving, and behind them, we have been working with those that have been impacted. We're working, uh, providing the next increment, called, they are even keeping on the deep. And we're also working with the Department of Human Services and H H F C on the preparation of coming along, which is a transition. So.
So how's that coming along?
Uh, DHS is moving well, and we've contributed 10 million from the department side, 10 million from the DHS DC. Specifically for the water system. And at the end of five years, when they're done with that, that particular part of the island. While we're not calling home as we're assuming that for homes there. And so that will be our village three, and so that's part of the reason why we're participating now. And, uh, instruction of that, because we weren't anticipating to develop that for another 17 years. But our opportunity provided us to. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, that is really good to hear, uh, the progress, and of course, many of those who are you need to move out by specific age, and also wants really good. Okay, thank you so much, Kaukua, I appreciate your presentation. And, um, yes, what I miss.
Well, very much, Kaukua. Just with the problem of one of the homes, we were wondering about the perimeter areas, rental, our facilities, like some of the open lots. There's no, there's no maintaining of the areas except for like us, but now we get to what we'll be doing it. Uh, we wondered if we're going to have anybody coming up, cut the grass and cut down the weeds and just.
So there's areas where it has been leased out already, the, the, the less C is responsible for the management of that. Uh, we are working on what that will look like later on, so. I think in general, uh, great question, and I'll make sure to get that with your staff, and also with leadership. Um, it is something that is important for us on a, by island basis, so appreciate your comment.
Wow, any more questions for Kaukua?
Just to say mahalo to like, mahalo to you and also to, uh, the new, maybe, while we need to share, I should come like one of our, being of society, because we're not having, you know, you have that insight.
Mahalo, we have a question for you, Brad.
In the future development, is there any plan for, like, a place that the native Hawaiians can gather at? Like a community bonding center? You know, here on Wana'i, it's real easy for Hawaiians to just kind of be, you know, not have a place to really, really call, you know, our home place that we can gather, I mean, for meeting and looking at playoffs, right? Is there a, an Hawaiian clubhouse that we could look at, you know, in the future development of those lands?
I think that's a great conversation for both entities, obviously, all your entities, all in all, and this. And including other, all the agencies that, that is a great conversation. Mahalo, very welcome.
Yes, community center.
There's a community center that's being built by the county, and also by the people all over. Uh, he is, he's one of the directors who has, uh, associated with, or in culture, that, things.
There are, if you have any other questions. Yeah, if you want, right next agenda is, I don't know, just keep the presentation, please. Next time agenda is, I'm looking at the lady who belongs to yours, and she'll see. Karakul, Karakul. I don't know, Karen's got the kids. Uh, we go first of all, we have any test fighters, just to give this to.
No test fighters, I'm.
I mean, mahalo, ladies and gentlemen, our two senators, please come up.
Mahalo, I am Kaku. Mahalo, mahalo to, I'm a woman, I'm from the state of Wana'i. Yeah, in Hawaiian culture, I mean, that is, um, shasta la larga. Um, we, last name, um, in Hawaiian culture, oh, and mahalo for, for I, for, um, your name, she's, okay. They invited me at the school and inviting us to be here, um, uh. Yeah, so in Hawaiian culture, the Kani is the one that's going to speak first, and then they do invite, um, our who has been here now, in this, sorry, but sort of initiative to get wine merchant here. Um, yeah, the school, uh, I agree, um, I'm going to take over, I'm going to go. So in wine culture, the Kani is the one that's going to speak first, and then they do invite, um, our who has been here now, is.
When I was asked to move to the school, to become a student, to help with all of Hawaii. I was asked to go there because of this, I had a way for all of Hawaii to. Two of my students at that time was commended, and money. Uh, I think money was second grade. How much, maybe a little bit shorter than full five, and, and, and it was four three. When, when they first came, it was even more, you mean, um, I mean, it was, they first. By the time I came in, I mean, there was a fourth grade. And she didn't wait for something Hawaii, I don't know. Um. Uh, I was here, she looked around the classroom, talking about Hawaii, I'm American, and so she decided, with the support of her father, and she will be the one, I mean, really. One whole year, summer rain, they were holding outside the school, showing, they said, what is the population of Wana'i? All the friends in that, and after the first week, actually, they were, after we got there, I said, look at them. Then Mr. Okus passing in, targeting them, but at the end of the year, the whole school was watching. Come to the next year, all the thing, he said, hey, what is that, you guys being outside? Why can't we do that? If you come to our school this, this year, Monday, Friday. So not to keep me, it's not seven, it's not thirty. So, all the way to the senior graduating class, standing in together, from. So this time, in class, nine, ten years, plus. Um, and mahalo, I'm, I'm really cool, I cook pa'ano, and, I cook una'ia, I cook my. I will, you know, I'll get, I'll get my, I'll get my. You know, so much, and I'm coming from Long Island, she's been, I'm, I'm, because of her leadership. We went from seven to nine, to three, to four. I'm a reporter. I'm a reporter, 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 I'm a reporter. I'm a reporter, that's my. And all that. I mean, and I, they continue to be, to move in. Because for them, they're full of life, convenience in mind. Because of them, the constitution, there's a new meaning of our constitution. It is the right of every child, think Hawaii, to have reasonable access to an education that will give them fluency in order of life. Is it reasonable for these two young daughters to have to live on a different island? Away from their ocean, away from their island, and to face the challenges of being young people, young Hawaiians? On their own? They, they, they come, they come, they come, they come. They, they, they need this sacrifice, not only for their family, but all of us. Because of their, I'm a reporter, I'm a reporter, I'm a reporter. But in, so I'm a reporter, I'm a. Now. They're eating all that. I'm really, I'm a reporter, I'm a reporter. Um, you look at the census paper, if you want to buy your own children, 14% will be, maybe small. If you look at news, oh yeah, they can put you on there, good job, they, we are cool, we already got what we needed. We look at newspapers, oh, they, they get, okay, tell me. They get so much money for their, from the, the guy who won the, they find all the next problems, he won't take care of them. If you look outside, so, but, like you guys are doing right now, my head is mine, I'm a reporter, so we can meet, out of here, out of. And you can, you can, you can see what the real means are. With our taking today, we have another, um, I'm a reporter, I'm a reporter. What they can't understand, or they can't understand. Um. If if you look behind. A lot of people consider, oh, I don't want too many Hawaiians, I don't want too much money. Which, who lives very big, many times three, grand grandpa, very powerful. When they made a kind of plantation, they got all the land and normally made everybody go to. They took all the land around Hawaii. He was one of the one Hawaiian who was still there. With all the kind of power around him. He stayed in his place, and he went to offer his own. He might want. If we take only a little bit behind you. And we put. And we don't give behind your spoiled needs. And just like we leaving that one, we put on my next step. Because he stayed there to the end of his life. I'm fully ready here for a mono, 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 and you come along here in the. Many, American, oh, Hannah, they're all the six, one more. But because we come together, we support. Everybody goes, everybody likes, wanting to develop Mahalo to this Mahana. And Mahalo to this next generation goes standing strong for us. And Mahalo to all of you for coming, depending on time, we will ask.
Any questions? So three questions, so I'm. A Maui girl, originally from Maui, um. Because of the terror, terror, terror of hand. And actually, my life in my former school. Back to what I believe in my world. Um. For years, I was trying to help here, and then we do bring the wine immersion program. And like the state, um, we always suffer. We resources to certify our um teachers, um teacher shortages. Um, it's hard to commit in department of education when we're competing with the private industry. Um. Schools that can provide more money for our teachers, more benefit for our teachers. But in my heart, um, I choose to stay in the Department of Education. For situations like this. Um. I took a lawsuit. And I would be. Superintendent Kishiro. Basically on the line with my approval, of course. But I didn't have to apply, because I tried for three years before that. And there was no Hawaiian immersion position, it was. My living dad said, oh, there's a there's a there's a Hawaiian position, and it's in Hawaiian language. I wanted to see immersion here, I was not going to be pushed into a Hawaiian language. Course here at this school, because my dedication is going immersion. Um, so yeah, and here, finally last year, this is my part here, finally last year. I gave up my position at my room. Um. And. My ohana supported me, and I applied that. For the higher level, and my heart is here, my Kiki are here now. Um, that's what it's all about, they are what it's all about, the passion for our home. Um. Can I ask, um. Are you funded, are you looking for funds? Is who in front of you? Well, we're in the K O P system under. L G S, yes, under the umbrella of the school here, we're okay, funded. Our challenges, resources, teachers. We opened up a free day. Um, this year, um, and one of our parents stepped into the decision. And hopefully, we have someone else coming in. In November, if I should supply and write the point three, but not one more. Um, but we do it, we. But the very expenses we have, we do it. When you say resources, I mean, um, where there's nothing improving, housing? Or it's just getting, you know, teachers be able to move here. Yeah, housing is an issue. Um, it's a. For me, I have to apply for my housing with the Department of Education. Every single year after we apply, and then you wait. And then you tell the boss, okay, well, I'm waiting for housing, because if I don't have a house, I'm I don't need to go back tomorrow. Um, so that process is harsh, they're working on it, um. I don't know, but it's all of it, um, especially fun, especially. People to want to be on the eight, um. Previously their education, our competition here is. Alice and Chris, the one who can. Um, so the idea for that is, oh, why would I become a teacher, right? Making a lot of money. Yeah, so we have that. But yeah, we need all of it. Maybe this is something we can share on our social media. If you have some trouble, please. Any other questions?
There's some comment below, I'm Jack Link Carver, uh. Oh, I'm not even okay. Uh, I believe a big support that he gave is the support of our. It was, it was not going to be me, um. When we had started as well. I'll say, and bear that support. Uh, the really, but unfortunately, you know, my mom is from here. I was a great. Not in, so I'm outside. Outside of our opinion, see what is. They want this to long, Laura, they thought. He said, this importance will never run. This early. We, from the get go, we're just kind of moving on the on here. Um, and thank you, Simon, for. Taking that opportunity to help our kids. He always thinks us, we always think him. People go down that way, uh, yeah, it is important for the. To save our learning language, learn the culture. Uh, the language in the school was not here for a. Very long time compared to all the other areas. Oh. The culture. Surrounding type of needs to be taught to the pool of here. What I'm hearing, what I'm seeing. The pool already. When they're starting, what will it get here, for that? This is one of the first things we uh, schoolway, was. Students, who was in the school, but I'm hearing that. The pool that's standing behind the children instead of behind the. The culture by community needs to be taught. To the pool here. Oh, more folk. Really welcome to United, and it's 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 hard here on London. Because, no, we got the majority down there, I find Uncle Larry. So Larry, Larry. A lot of them work for him, but I'm not helping, or they don't see him, or they would just say, hey, it's their uncle Larry, they are. And others, they'll, at the beginning, when we're trying to get Kaitoni in the school. Even even, but that. He hasn't been changing himself yet, yeah. Or. I said, because I don't work for him, I'm not helping. Yeah, um, one of the very, there's there's a few of us. More material, um, yeah, so, the medium's fire, there was. Everybody's like, oh, let him do it, let him do it, and then there was talk that, oh, he made it. No, I say, why? Why should he? Why can't we? Uh, there's there's so much being, there's so much that I want to bring on. I don't know if it's the right time. Uh, we. You know, to this day. It's hard. For example, what we have done, my wife and I, with this uh, with this last decision. Or like, so our town, just. Our families, what do you mean, why? They didn't listen that much. And then sometimes he occurs as to do it, trying to members. Um. But still, when the ground has been so long, it's like, did you do the right thing? Did we do the right thing for them? And I'm considering for earlier, to keep on, to prepare the top seven as well. I look somewhere, and I go, if we do the right, are there appreciable habits? Are they doing for the right? Uh. Well, no, everything we've done, everything we do. They do not pull out, not announce, it's all for the people. Although my people have a move way, go learn once again, you know, they're right. I, we care, we thought, we can really thought there was, it was everywhere else, and that's what we fought for, we fought for equality. Equality for community here. Yeah, unfortunately, our teens have to move with. Time in their life that, you know. Most important, the teenagers. And not being able to come home every day, or just not being able to check in and physically, you know, then that's like one, other team, you want to stop that far. That's right, you're true. But I'm happy that these kids don't have to do that. And hoping. Being a day of happiness. Yeah, I don't want to be here, all of these people. That some of the. Some of the people here. Want to kick on that chapter. Now. Three or four, maybe, two, three, five, now. Um. Let's see, to, like, so we want to cooperate with the here. Maybe, maybe. To connect, finding the fact, who they were. That we're all, okay, we're all competitive people, and we all serve. Here, there's a lot of things that, a chief officer, and the teachers, the firemen, but all not from here. Unfortunately, it's because a lot of people here don't teach their children to serve. And I try, so that my kids try to let, it be, anybody I talk to. That's why we're here, to serve. Everything is going to come for a better story, too. We not see, we benefit of what we do. The point. We all something to be sorting, fight for it, that's what we did. Um, my, my chief is giving, I hear right now.
You want to ask me a question?
Sorry.
Um, there's no question, which we get, that's right, now, demonstration about this morning. When our P P are speaking our language, they're singing our songs, they're providing food. Absolutely the right thing. I'm going to be meeting with spring candidate soon, is there anything that I should be asking? Sharing?
I think that a question is brought up, for me as a mom, having my teenage girls away. How can we serve, and until before, even in the lawsuit, I asked for. Please bring this, so that we kids don't have to. Be still fighting for them to come back home. But they don't feel like this is their place anymore, because they haven't been pushed out. However, these speaks of us being servants for our community, I work for the D H S, um. Program for SNAP and financial assistance, so I see the burden in a lot of family, um. So the question, how can it be helped, or how can we be of assistance? To me, it's providing it all the way through, even. For them to have a queen, be placed here, for them to continue their education. Why, again, a place somewhere else, it's a blessing, don't get me wrong, that they learned a lot. We are staying connected in their culture, however. Back to how we can bring it here and continue it, and try to adhere on our island, our home. That's what we need. Um.
No, thank you so much for the wonderful presentation today, I truly appreciate that, and. We, yeah, we have, I'm catching up with you guys, I'm ready, yes, I'm ready, man. Um, at this time, I'd like to. Have our best presenter, this is from the L nine Community Health Center, would they would we have anyone sign up to testify on the subject?
No, I didn't sign that, it's been done, it's silent.
All right, maybe we have our L nine Community Health Center representative. Please come onto the mic and give the presentation.
Wow.
John.
Hello, my name is Jared Yarles.
Get with both of the Indians, that's nice, though.
That's.
There you go.
Well, uh. I'm Jared Yarles, I'm an associate with the Health Center, I've been here at the Health Center for ten years. Um, I must have two Kiki and a little bit of Nani. And just echo, if everyone can do the help support of me, and I made so many sacrifices to be here to help nurture, you know, our future. Um, now the health scenario, I think, was to be a native one of scholar. Uh, I felt five other scholars to be their service environment for the health center. So any support that you can get for native Hawaiian, vendors, Hawaiian eye doctors to, one, service on the N I D is always huge. Uh, it's a challenge to just like finding, who to find healthcare providers to, when I fall in that equal. And so our ohana, grandma, Nani, people have to travel for medical care. And I asked about the community center and, you know, the health centers, but it was a really big. Um, wish to have a community fitness class, and right now, we don't have a space that we could utilize all classes in. So it'd be great to have some type of a community center that. Would that would be available for native Hawaiians to gather, to have cultural activities, to have fitness classes, to. To learn, you know, as much as we can, while the way it is to be quiet, you know, for me there. Yeah, that's pretty much it, you know, my health center, so, you know, it's it's a challenge finding providers in N I D. To apply over twelve people, between Maui and Wa'aku, to let me to provide services, so. Patients don't have to transfer, uh, during the COVID pandemic, the health center became the only dental provider on island. And that immensely burdened our team to, you know, try to provide as much as we can, and it's not enough. We we still have a lot of patients who, you know, have to go to Wa'aku for dental care, because they just. Have, but don't have the capacity, you know, to reach all those, so, any support that we can have there. It's going over to that, I think, right?
Oh, Mahalo, I can, I can, I can, but you said to us, vision will be same, which is, you know. So I can truly, we're not going to give you any advice here, we're going to share. This period, we need, obviously, we have, that they want to sign in, should we have an emergency?
So the healthcare situation of my.
You know, you were born and raised here. Now it's time to come back and live here and get back and raise your family here as well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Alright. Thanks a lot. So, how goes in? My question has to do with the pathway. Back to Lanai or on Lanai from the resident ward or possibility. Are you engaged in any way with? The medical school? So that there could be a pathway back for some of these new emerging practices? To make their way back to Lanai or to Lanai to serve.
I agree with everything that Hulukani said, you know, the financial structure of the body is the issue. We look at. Where can I be financially successful and where can I build my home and my family that? Lanai is about this, where I'm gonna live. What am I doing with my other half that has engineering degree? And you know, what is it gonna be possible to make life here? As far as tapped into, you know, bringing. Students who are currently going to school in Lanai. I am closely working with the Native Rhino Scholarship and I have first six different students. Who are native or scholars to complete their. Physical rotation of the health center. But again, it's just a challenge of where they're gonna live, housing. You know, I do like to say Lanai is one of the most unique places in the state where. Majority of our community is very financially strained and housing strained where your housing is connected to your employment. If you no longer work for a certain individual or entity, you may lose that house. Thus therefore, you cannot stay on Lanai. And it's the same challenge that we have as an employer is. I happen to say once I come work here, then it ain't really good. You know, I can't just say, oh, I'm crazy, let's go out together, man. See you over Monday. You'll figure it out, right? It's really on our side too to kind of say, well, how does stuff work?
Yeah.
More than that. And at times. You know, the health center has to now look at what's financially doable for both parties. To be successful and there's no way as a federally follow up a health center. That we can match with a private medical entity on law who we're now is gonna pay an individual. Work here.
Yeah. Follow up, follow up question. Is it appropriate in your profession? If we were to go back to how you create the profession? And provide scholarships? To budding doctors? But the requirement is to come to Lanai to serve their first five years. Would that be an appropriate equation or we don't, we don't wanna go there? We, we wanna be creative this.
Kind of what the Native Rhino Scholarship was intended to do, that's why I'm here. Um, but the flexibility of that scholarship still leaves it open where they can pick. Where if I would like to lash.
Sure.
So. I get where you're coming from, that's a great idea. Again, I, I think if we give the right, I mean, that's our goal to the health center too is we really would like to have. A Lanai graduate from the NHS, go become a dentist, come back and live here. I would love to hire you, you know, I mean, that's how we really wanted to see if we can encourage that. The other part too with. Kind of like loan repayment and all that kind of stuff too, the federal government. Lanai is on the lowest list as far as the health center, uh, when we can get loan repayment for our scholars who want. They're ready. And that's just still geographically and all the federal government calculates that loan store because we are. There are so many miles from Maui. The federal government doesn't see the ocean and how that separates us. Basically, you're just supposed to not be in the same boat as everybody else. But we are the lowest, you know, this for dental, for medical, for loan repayment. So actually. Uh, Lanai. Nurse practitioner and I just hired, she got denied the loan repayment. So. Actually, why are, why are we having so many challenges? Again, everything that Hulukani faces, we face a local problem like. How come we can't get teachers here? How come we can't get medical providers here? It's just that kind of circle of challenge and we always need support and resources. It's not, it's not, we can break those barriers, bring teachers here. That's the question I share with, you know, the, the parents that they share right now. Is my son and daughter gonna be able to graduate Lanai Elementary School? In Hulukani? Right now, they're in kindergarten and third grade. Is it gonna have? Or am I gonna be in the same boat as the parents? Am I gonna have to send my kids off and? With Hulukani?
Oh, that's yeah.
Whoa, thank you, well done.
Thank you so much. Um. Right now, we're going to go into meeting concerns and then to discuss those departments. Um, here's a real situation here, folks. Transportation, as you possibly know, is very, uh, it's been very difficult. And not reliable and our pricing has changed several times. We have one flight out for some of us to leave at three P M. And otherwise, we're just not gonna drive it to Maui. It's so much. I know, right? But some people that work with the federal government too a little. So, um, what, what we're gonna do is just have, so we can all, uh, cheer for Loo. Finish up with our Mr. Bunnies, uh, Mr. Fires. And, um, and I'm sorry, I hope I know we didn't, we had to go to the point. If you guys don't mind. Mahalo everyone so much, but you know, we're gonna have another interview. We just may not have any, the Manao series and this is probably coming back in one through eight and then. We want to try to implement it like a, you know, three or four months after the fact so we can follow up on all of the concerns and so forth. We come back and blah blah again and so this will be a good opportunity. So we take notes so then hopefully we have some more good answers for you or be more free next time to come back. And not in a year, we're trying to do a little bit sooner than that, okay? Mahalo again, I don't, don't go out to you. Okay, now we do have a couple of, um, our residents here and we'd like to speak. And I'm gonna call on Señora Tijiri.
Well, okay. All right, everyone, I'm probably also. Uh, I'm assuming, um, but. In short. Uh, just some aloha. For you guys coming, meaning just personally. Um, I remember when. A woman was a representative of my. You know, we had, we were not before, you know, we had representatives here on Lanai. Um, sharing commentary, maybe just in any other way. Um. I'm like, I'm identifying as. Somebody that we can talk to, we can speak to you guys and I should know about it. That question you raised earlier. How, how can you help? It's, it's hard to answer like, honestly. But, uh, I, I don't, I don't know. Why, but I. I just wanted to say thank you for the time before we did have a read on Ramani. And we could talk to that person there. Thank you very much.
Oh, I just want to say, when we asked you how we can help you, can I think of anything? I just want to remind you that Oha is the strongest voice in Hawaii. I took advocate for all of our Hawaiian rights. So you asked us to do that, I will do it anyway. But, um, don't forget that we are here to speak on here. They have to whoever needs to be spoken to, the legislature, the governor, whoever, the mayor, you know? That's what we're here for, that's why Oha is Oha. So, mahalo everyone for all the work you do.
Also, I wanted to share that when, um. Two months ago, when I asked. I was on. I don't know where. So, I don't know. Can we collaborate together? Can you say, oh. Big shit. If you get back to you on that. So, in other words, we can be experts in large. You guys just formulate that kid's life and how we can go within our days beyond that.
And I, I also wanted to. Get some clarification. Um, when it was mentioned regarding the Makua. And, uh. I wanna make sure you're hearing this as it should be, is it where you need to have, um. Teachers for the Makua to learn the language to them and converse with you?
That and. We're on this. Sorry, sorry.
Uh. Yeah, that's what I did, and I can also. Learn more about that, that's why. The culture of serving the people. Culture of serving each other. Caring for each other, hearing the question you made. Thanks. But it's really. The, what we call it, hierarchy. And Kumu is out there. Makua is still there. We tell them what you want to do. It's pretty much it. And that's the culture of it. Like, not move to the tranquilize, but not move to the red, but it's not wrong. Not do that. In this, in this is of how long? I mean, we have. That's why, and that's why the culture of how people need to learn. Fortunately, you decide now and everybody else following through. Not only also understand their culture, going up all the way to me. Everyone is starting.
Yeah, cause kind of, kind of the, um. Network has kind of annual by annual or so many years go by. A festival, the gathering, the minds, the teaching where partners would put on a meal and you know, together every now and then.
Um, they're going for a model, you know?
Yeah.
They want.
So what is that?
Um, so, Hulukani is a concert for. Nanaleo for. Um, Bali, however, kind of these schools, um, do participate in. Uh, food groups, um, it's a big concert. Uh, last year, I took the kids over to the concert and. It was overwhelming for them, but it was awesome that they. Were able to see other schools and other children's the language. Um. Yeah. Who you want to eat, they call me Nidamish. Because everybody there, I knew from my past students. And, um. But we had a great time. The kids were so happy, they didn't wanna come home. Cause they're not having that opportunity to converse and to see other children. Um, do what they did this morning in a bigger facility. And it was the first time since, uh, for the concert since COVID. So it was like walk, walk, you know, it was just so beautiful. I think what Chakri saying in the education, um, our parents need. Um, mahalo Kumu Señora. Because he does language classes for our. Uh, Kupuna and our Makua every Wednesday. Uh, our current group meets as a, as a group. I believe one on one. On Wednesday. Uh, but just the, the education for our parents to understand what Kaya'vi is about. And, um, yeah, that's. Where I'm from, I'm Hawaii, um, twenty seven years. You still have those parents come in and they're just not sure, you know? If this is a whole language thing or is it a mindset, a cultural thing? And that's the education that goes on, you know, I'm still learning. We're still learning, it, it never stops, um. But I will do. For the time that I'm here, I will do as much as I can to support these parents. Um, in Japan. Um. I would like to tell the administration. Late soon, yesterday, about continuation for our K P. To the sixth grade middle school and then my school, the Chinese, start down, that's my, my goal. Before I go home. If I go home. Wait, Mafalari said. Mafalari is gonna give me a house, he said, okay, then I'll stay. But I was having, the struggle is there, when I first came here, I was like. This is like. The worst step channel, like I could not believe that this was. Um, I, I thought she ain't for my, what we doing. Um. But. These people are being treated like this when they are part of my country. It's that, that was just powerful to me when I first. Got there and maybe thousands are waiting for me and why I haven't gone home. But. Nothing is to, to trouble. Well, our C E O is gonna talk to Kim Naga sheet tomorrow. So she can share the process and story here on Lanai. Mahalo everyone. Mahalo.
I also wanna share that being the first Twitter owner. A city who went to Kaya'vi, what that meant for our community. I'm guessing your challenges are similar to what they were. What we experienced twenty some last year's ago. And what that meant was witnessing our Kumu. Stay till late in the evening and Makua being there, the K P Alana as well. To physically cut these. And, um, yeah. Put the, the, all the letters on the. Yeah. Yeah, to then tape it over the. The English word so that they could have textbooks written show, so the Kiki. I, I can only imagine unfortunately some things have not changed.
If you want to have the con books, you still have to do it that way. But Kaliku'a Wau and Kama's publishing has, um, done a way better job. Um. Now, where we can order books and we have books already done for us in the classroom. But the problem is still real.
Till like they reach like a place simple level or they weren't just like, they not indicating. First, yeah, just taking.
To a great level right now.
And, and also, I, I know transportation probably isn't the thing, but just to share our experience of Alana. We also had to fund raises as a network just for. How, for just transportation, where education system did not honor that even though we follow G O E. Like you mentioned, we're treated like the, um. Very kind of child that just doesn't get that mom like this. And that really has. Has to do with the V O E system, how they treat our culture, how we see our culture. And how there is a lack of reverence for our culture, there needs to be, uh, coolly to that. And the fact that Oha compensates me about three million dollars. And we that, that says something that we can have to do. We hope for that and I feel it's still not enough.
Yeah, forty five years and we're still, we still have struggles. When I first went into kindergarten, um, on Maui. I came from Nanaleo, Maui. And, um, yeah, we, our parents paid our own electric bill, our parents paid our own ka'o. Our parents. Paid for my icebox to be delivered so we can have an icebox. Until we marched. Every March, we took the kids up to high street and we protested and. That was a struggle then, I mean, we finally got it, but it was about my. Two of my children are part of that system. Um, they know what marching is, they know what. How many signs we thought of.
Um. Um, it's, it's real, yes, um. It kind of like, I'm trying to give the last speaker on, uh, because the board secretary needs to question like at three o'clock also. So, uh, we will also be on, uh, you're getting and. Uh, our Kuma will represent your voices tomorrow to the superintendent of education. The T V D, how are you?
One time, you know. They don't want to let it be a long time, they may. Oh, my. Let me give my.
Okay.
My boy, my child, oh, boy! Woo! See, oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm the one who is able to do this, so we. Woo! Okay. I represent. So, they are giving territories, so I am making my project. I am with. We talk, I know who. I am with, in Hawaii. I'm going to conduct an office field. And here's another one. I'm a member of the council. That is state. There is to do with housing, branding, gathering. Talk about gathering. I mean, uh, you, I'm sixty three years. I am from Honolulu. I come from Cali. Yeah, you know, Cali area. But anyway, talk about. Many. I worked for a nice in California, twenty three years was a terror maker. I created, I was like, Emily, because the libel, neighbor, the hall, the gate, the gateway. That was my job. I feel today. I still hear that sound is going. I would have a journey happening. That is. I would, all the way. You know, dirty Emily, beating for rent. Oh, what if you do? Hell no, you know, you don't do it like. You take a patient, when you go to the house, they excuse me, I have to pay time. He is the situation, so we're not in your house. But if you can't go, I can, the doctor say, okay. I talked to her doctor. I will decide to protect the patient. Out there. I'm happy, you know? You might get, get over our way to everything, but fine. Yeah, if you have to get on the ground. We said, do get on the ground, get in the ambulance, take him to the mall. Play there. And you know, it's too clear, we don't know his people. I mean, I'm teaching tree live and know everybody for I live. But that's good. In a way, it's good, I like to see people with. Walking and talking to the citizens, doing their thing. But you know, when it comes to now. With Oha, I agree with that, I'm always there. In part alone, you never enter, you wait to do. Yeah, I did that, implemented. I will, you know, do it, I'll go and who could have killed that house, they. They age to the way they some, they might not come on. That's who I'm about to come from. I have to, we start by, but the, the number is. The number thing, the desk can be all. We thought all very good. I gave you, leaving up. From Ora, from Hapa. Honolulu, Big Island, Maui, Samuai. I mean, all those island and we learned our life and we go to living, I. You meet those people, we confident. Don't talk anytime, sense can just stop it. Even in such a situation. When you see them greeting. You're calling, hello, huh? Who is, but your voice, my friend, no. You try to help. They didn't know where you were coming from. But today, I saw a day. Because my friend, I work for the church shop. Not. And I went only in. I work for the church shop. They told me I'm to run. It's for worthy of community. How old is that now? The girls are old. You want a wedding?
I'll let the chair.
Oh, wait. Oh, I'm going. I don't see any tools on charity. You're not able to anything. And I thought she, I think. How old are you? Yeah, I think it's two. Nothing would do it, they know. Well, no, they're not true, they, 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 they might do, yeah, no. But she, she is that. I still take care of the child, and my family too, well. I just brought up my daughter, second daughter, she lives in front of the theater, come back here. And we got my rental. Me, very, very. She definitely seventeen year old and she was in Lanai when I had her in school. I say, please. You know, you got what you doing now. You have grammar. Oh, yeah, you didn't know what you did, what I'm gonna do, back and slap. Hey, you gotta like it, I don't cry. I'm grammar, I say, no, not no grammar. Wait, I came from, I came from Cali. I bred from Prime Town High School, I was a nineteen sixty grad. You can go, try to high school with all the Samoans, the Filipinos. The Howlins, oh, my, I mean, very, 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 very. But the thing is that I'm enjoying competing on the night. This is very, of course, strong. The night is strong to everyone. But me, we careful what we go that way now. You know, there are people I get. Our all is here, we come great, 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 thanks to here. Come. You want to get one.
The T V D.
You watching us? Well, thank you very much, it's already late today. I, I called it, it's okay. Who cares?
Oh, and happy birthday.
Thank you. You know, I've been. I've not been here in a long time. But we sort of, I'll care for to you and every five months.
Um. We, we would say happy birthday to you. Okay, kids, I can talk to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
I love. And kids, kids, we try to. Not here.
You know, I'm. That leads to you, you have to mahalo all of you, that keep being to share your thing with us. Um. This is not to, on the K P on that side and, um, parents that. So grateful, they basically went with. With, uh, all the, we, our language, mahalo queen, for all that we do. Um, if we don't do it, who will, right? So, like I said, we are here to advocate for our issues. And don't hesitate to follow us. And, um. You know, we can, we reach a halalulu, wherever you need us, so. Don't hesitate to come. Mahalo for the wonderful opening that the chant, the glory and the mistletoe, we really, we're glad it's, yes. Feels so, um, happy, happy. So, uh.
Okay, uh. So then, the whole like here.
Are we trying to work like?
Yeah.
Are we done?
To talk about.
Are we done?
That, that we know, we asked for any of, I've done this for a long time.
Can I?
And that's really, um. When I talk to them, oh, you can, there was a dream. But see, there are, I don't know, me, we can, we can, someday, when it's in you. I don't even have the words, I started with. Well.
Okay, we got. I'm gonna unplug you. Are we done? Hello?